All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our work session. We're back on Zoom for the foreseeable future. First order of business is approval of the council August 5th, 2021 work session minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion.
Motion. And a second, any questions or comments? All right, all in favor of the minutes approval, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passes. The order of business tonight really is just one, one topic that we want to circle back to. I guess months ago, at the request of Councilmember Ward, there was some discussion, discussion about the railroad crossing at South Guyer and Monroe Place, and there was a request for some information on being able to remove the barriers so people can, drivers can make a left-hand turn on to South Guyer from Monroe Place. The reason for tonight is part of the South Guyer project needs to move forward with engineering. And Russ just wanted to circle back with us, give us some information as to whether the council has interest at this point right now in pursuing the south side of the tracks, barrier removal in arms, so that left turn lane, left turn can be made, or we just move forward where we are now, and it can always be revisited later. So the purpose of tonight is to give Russ, you know, just direction on where council wants to proceed. Russ, is that kind of framing?
Yes, I think that's a fine framing there. I just want to update council on what has transpired since we met on May, I believe it was 6th, and had a discussion about rail crossing and Mr. Ward's suggestion concerning the railroad signalization and possibilities there. So we met with UPRR, Union Pacific Railroad Representatives, on a couple of occasions, one of which included an FRA representative, the FRA is Federal Railroad Administration. And these were via Zoom meetings to discuss what the opportunities are for the city and what it would take to adjust current plans to include a change of the signalization to allow removal of the left turn barrier south of the railroad tracks at Monroe Place. Of course, we talked with council on May 6th about our understanding at that time that a four quadrant gate or change to the signals to accommodate that, according to the website, was about $300,000 to $500,000 additional cost to the project. Through these subsequent meetings that were scheduled, and Councilmember Ward was there, and I believe Councilmember Gibbons was also there. We determined and ascertained that the cost is actually between 400 and 550,000 best guesstimate or estimate from UP's contractors to accommodate that need. So we wanted to report that back to City Council at this time. There was also discussion about the need for the city to accommodate American ADA, American Disabilities Act requirements regarding the sidewalks that will traverse the UP right-of-way. And a good bit of, of analysis is going to be required there. Our discussions regarding that indicate that UP is similar to the city of Kirkwood and other government entities in that when someone outside that government entity asks to make changes within that right-of-way that UP owns, they require 100% control over what is done. So basically, they will indicate what will be allowed and what won't. And that's very similar to the city working with a developer. When a developer approaches us, we have the full say on what is acceptable and what isn't within that right-of-way. So in UP's case, with the sidewalk crossing and ADA, you know, there was some discussion, I know Mr. Ward suggested that perhaps we could use that as a point of negotiation because it benefits UP for us to improve their APA standing or ADA standing to do some of the requirements for them, perhaps they could do cost sharing. We basically found that there is no real opportunity to cost share with them on this. They sent us notification that they do not have an APA transition plan, an ADA, sorry, ADA's transition plan that a lot of government entities have. So they are not really compelled to do anything without us basically paying for it and taking care of that improvement. So anything that occurs within their right-of-way will have to be funded by the city. We did talk with John Hessel, City Council, at the May 6 meeting said there could be, there should be a group assembled to have further discussions with UP Railroad to negotiate shared costs and so forth. And Councilmember Ward did recommend that John and Bob Sears have some discussions along those lines. And I wasn't involved directly in those discussions, but John had relayed to me that they did not see a very strong standing from the city's standpoint in, in a negotiating stance because UP's policy is to have their right-of-way 100% paid by the entity that is requesting entry. So is that a good characterization, John, of what, what basically you relayed to me?
Yeah, I think that's fair, Russ.
Okay. So we're at a point now where we have held the project, we're in the design and engineering phase currently on the overall Guyer Road project, and we've held it for really about a month or so while these discussions and and meetings occurred. But we, we feel that there is not much to be ascertained beyond what we have so far. And there's not a real good negotiating point for the city to work from. And we're coming to council to say, if you want us to further the discuss, further the, the design of signal crossing to allow the left turn, that looks to be in the 450-500 range. We'll have to enter into a contract with UP to nail down that price and do some preliminary engineering work on that. And that's the, the reimbursement agreement through the quiet zone in order to accomplish that. So that's where we stand right now.
Russ, let me ask a question. I know we talked a while about this the other day. So what we're, what we're proposing to do in the right-of-way is simply put in sidewalks, is that correct, on both sides of the street?
That is correct. In the, in the grant application and the approved project scope for the South Guyer improvements, that is the work that is to be done in the right-of-way. That is an extension of ADA quality cross sidewalks alongside Guyer Road.
So again, if I understand, if we chose, and I'm not suggesting this, but just to help understand, if we chose not to do that and just stop at the right-of-way, then there'd be nothing for us to do for UP within that, correct?
That is one, one option that could be before us, but staff would not recommend that.
Oh, no, no, I'm just saying, I think it's just helping strengthen the conversation. So, but, so what you said is the minute we go into their right-of-way for something that we want, something they don't have to do, they can basically tell us what they want done while we're doing that? Does that make sense? We're going to put it in.
Yes, they can dictate the terms of our entry by requiring certain improvements. I mean, one of the things that they are considering dictating is that we replace all of the area between the railroad tracks, which is well beyond what we would want to do, but replace that with a new concrete placement. It's well beyond what we would want to do and probably raise the price of the overall project by $200,000. We're hoping to work with them to avoid that.
But again, just the minute we go in there right-of-way, what you're saying is they have control. They obviously have control and it can, and basically can have us do things that aren't even in, that we don't even want to do, so to speak.
Correct. That is what we found. And that's consistent with any number of government entities or private entities with right-of-way.
All right. And then the other thing now, we can open up the questions. We've got the, you know, the grant on this. So how, how would that play into any additional costs that we would incur through the UP's requirements?
Right now, we have a certain amount of funding in the overall project for getting across UP's right-of-way. If they impose improvements beyond what we're anticipated as would be appropriate for us in the grant, we do have an ability to request a 10% additional allocation because of that requirement by UP. That allocation could be denied or could be approved. It would go through East-West Gateway, and it would be requesting the federal funding match on the additional cost.
Let me ask just one, one last question. Again, I'm going way down the road. I don't want to borrow trouble. You know, we just, you know, we want to do the sidewalks and they come back and the additional cost over and above sidewalks is $500,000. I'm going to throw that number out. At, at that point, we could, I'm not saying we want to or would, we could not do the sidewalks. Is that correct? If, if, if the dollar amount just seems to be outrageous?
That is an option.
Okay. All right. Just, just trying to frame the whole, the whole conversation. So basically, what, again, tonight, you're just confirming or asking council that the southern changes that Councilmember Ward had kind of talked about, just they're not going to be pursued right now. Is that basically the, what you're looking for from council unless?
Well, I, I'm not suggesting that.
Oh, no, no, that's my world. I'm sorry.
$100,000 to $550,000. And if council were to wish to pursue that, we would have to identify a funding source and so forth. But what we found in the exploration since our last meeting was that that price is instead of 300 to 500 is now a minimum of 400 to 550, according to their engineers.
Before I go to questions from council, Bob or John, I know there's been, had conversations from legal aspect. Do you wish to add anything to what's been said thus far?
I'm not sure that there's anything that I need to add. Again, I, I was confused. I thought that there was some discussion about tying the crossing gate, the quiet zone, to the ADA project, and we're trying to do them in combination. We spoke with Wallace, and Wallace clarified he recognized those are separate and that we could address the crossing gate, the quiet zone separately. I, Bill Bensing may want to offer some other comments, I think, because I've had a lot of conversations with Bill as well as to where we are in this project. But I don't think I have anything else to offer.
Bob, do you have anything? Can't, can't see that, Bob. We're, oh, okay. All right. Okay. You can come back later. All right. Why don't we go to council questions and comments? And I will, Wallace, since, you know, you were the initiator of the discussion, why don't you go ahead and go first?
Okay. So as, as John alluded, this is kind of a two-part conversation. And, and I would like, at this point, to see if we can't get some approval from the, from the council, at least consensus, that we look at that Monroe Place relief in a future East-West Gateway grant process. It seems that the timing on this and the homework that would, was necessary to get that done just didn't happen. And that we could always circle back to this on a future grant proposal. Now, and, and back to the, back to, with that aside, now back to the, to the crossing itself. What, what I've seen in preliminary, or at least, let me see, what I've heard in preliminary conversations is a very minimalist approach to the sidewalks at, at that crossing. And I, I think that's a mistake. If we're, if we're going to do this, I think we, we, we come up with what is the best practices, what is the, the most safe option for pedestrians, bicyclists, and, and anyone in ADA circumstances in a wheelchair, for example. So when I, when I visited FW, FHWA's website and looked at best practices for those for railroad crossings, what they're recommending is separate gates for sidewalks with a swing-away component so that you can't get trapped in those. And signage on the inside that says this is an escape route, and on the other side, it's a do not cross. So those come down simultaneously with, with the roadway crossing. I think those, given the, the, the high level of pedestrian bicyclists and, and other use of that crossing because its proximity to the park in large part, I think we should pursue, if we have additional monies, as, as Mr. Haas has stated, that we, we task the, the administration to give us the best safe crossing that we can provide.
Other council comments or questions on this? Raise your hand in a second, see if anything has anything. Councilmember Gibbons?
I, I'm in agreement, especially with Vision Zero and Councilmember Dooley, you might want to weigh in. But I just think that whatever sidewalk crossing we have, that it should be the safest we can possibly have and fit into the, the Vision Zero initiative so that all users are, are safe.
Anything from, from any other council members at this, oh, John?
I was just going to add, picking up on both what Wallace and Liz said, that if the council is considering going up to the railroad crossing and not doing what we need to do to meet our own internal standards, we could create some legal problems for ourselves, alluding to the same thing that Wallace and Liz were alluding to, that if we don't do the sidewalks properly, we don't do the railroad crossing, whatever the area is, I apologize for my stupidity on the characterization of what you call it. I'll just call it the right-of-way. If we don't bring that up to our standards, you're going to create some legal problems if an accident occurs out there, whether it's a bike or disabled or whatever.
I mean, Russ, I mean, we would not do that, would we? I'm not sure Wallace meant by minimalist or minimal approach. I'm kind of curious now.
Well, our, our proposal to UP was full five-foot wide sidewalks with three-foot, I guess we would call them shoulders. UP requires the three-foot shoulders on each side of them. So it's really, again, it would be ADA compliant and meet all standards for crossing a railroad track. I think what Wallace is suggesting is going above and beyond the normal standard and requiring, or the city requesting a crossing gate at each sidewalk separate. We haven't broached that subject at all.
Yeah. So, so what, what Union Pacific recommended and FRA suggested they could do is simply take our existing sidewalks, widen them, and put them outside of the, the crossing arms that are in place now. So there's, there's no physical barrier to, to, to people using those sidewalks either direction. And keep in mind, now, this is a no-horn zone, so, so there's no horn coming to help you. And if, as we've seen, children and possibly adults with headphones are, are, are in peril there. And, you know, if you, and I'll, I'll forward to, to the council members, the links to the railway recommendations for those crossings. One of the things that, that we were going to attempt to do was try and make them at a right angle to the, to the railroads, because that's one of the things that they recommend, is that, that, that the approaches and crossings for rail, for sidewalks be at right ankles to the, to the railroad lines. So, you know, rather than, than saving pennies at the expense of potentially someone's life, I think we should do the right thing. Take a look at those, at the, at the, at the recommendations for best practices for those and, and implement that. We've got the money. Let's just do, let's just do what we need to get.
Anything else? Maggie?
I, I am conflicted. I certainly hear what you're saying. I'm certainly listening to what John just said, and that makes a big difference. As far as Vision Zero goes, yes, of course, we want all of our streets to be 100% as best they can be. Vision Zero is built on data, and we don't have the data for this particular area. We do have data for other areas where people have died. Now, I don't think we should wait for someone to die to do something, but hence my confliction. It is built on data, and we don't have that data. Again, I don't want to wait until we do. So there you go.
Mark?
Yeah, I have anything more to add? I, I think I'm disappointed the railroad doesn't want to negotiate, but I understand why. Obviously, they, they have the leverage here on it. But, you know, that's, that's obviously an unsafe area, and I, I think we need to do what we can to make it safe because, you know, there are, there are other railroad crossings in Kirkwood where we have had tragedies around them. And, you know, this may be a prototype of things that we want to do in the future.
Bob, are you able to talk? Okay. That's not, that's not always a bad thing either.
I was just going to say, can we take advantage of that in some way?
It just looks like you're on mute.
Go off his penmanship.
Can we just have a mute button on Bob all the time?
We're a whole joke with people we like. Russ, what is, what is, what's the timeframe we're looking at now? I mean, in terms of the whole, the whole project, the engineering and all this?
I'd have to defer to Bob, to, to Bill. Sorry, not to Bob Sears. I was looking at Bob Sears and thinking about Bill. But Bill, can you give us a quick rundown on the timeframe?
The project timeframe is right now is that we are behind on our timeframe. So this is not expected to go to construction until probably the spring of '23. So that gives you when construction would we, would begin, okay? We still have to get through the railroad approval, okay? We still, then it, once we get through that, then we can go to MoDOT for our preliminary plan approval. And once we get preliminary plan approval, then we go to a public meeting to get public input. And then we take any comments from the public input, if we want to address those and, and add them to the plans. And then, once we do that, we go to right-of-way documents and then to final design, okay? And right-of-way is, is the glitch there. Sometimes right-of-way can go fast, sometimes it can go slow. And that's, that's what we're up against right now is that timeframe. So we're still within our timeframe per our agreement with East-West Gateway. But we were, we're behind schedule on certain elements within that timeframe. So it's spring of 2023 is when we have to have, we, is, is our ultimate deadline to start construction.
Just make a comment regarding Maggie's concerns. Maggie, the, the recommendation from FRA and from FHWA is with the, the information gleamed from tens of thousands of real grade-level crossings. So I, I, I think that, that seems to me to be a very reasonable database to their decision-making to, for, for Kirkwood to, to get on board.
Thanks, Wallace.
Do you have a phone? You want to do something with it? Bob?
You do know you're on mute.
Yeah.
Bob could come in as a guest and, and Freddie could forward it in.
Now we can hear you. Yeah.
Okay. I've, I've dialed in through that process, and apparently it's working. I, I do have some thoughts on this. First of all, it's not an unsafe crossing. It was made safe by the, by the divider and by the gates. For, certainly, it's not ADA. My comment on the general discussion that Russ presented, I think that's correct, except that I think the only, I wanted to make clear for, for, first of all, because it didn't sound clear to me. John and I did not go to the railroad and negotiate anything or talk to the railroad about anything. This was based on prior, our conclusion was based on prior information that we had received about what the railroad had said. So I just wanted to clear that up. And then I think the only resolution that we had in our discussions outside of council, which included Wallace and, and John, and Tim and myself, was that there's not a rush to get this resolved at this time. We thought there might be because we thought we would have to deal with the crossings, the, the crossing gates and the divider south of the tracks within this project. And then the project had deadlines. Well, it's, it turns out that that's not the case and that we can reflect more on, on what we want to do with this whole intersection. I, I, there, Wallace came forward with some ideas he, through his research that he found about how you can use gates that also protect the sidewalks and pedestrians. One thing I'd, I'd mention about that is that while, if we follow what the, what the railroad suggested, which was to put the sidewalks outside of the gates so that nobody is physically, there's no physical barrier in front of someone on the sidewalk, is that that's true. And they may be wearing headphones, but they also have the activated gates for the streets coming down and the lights flashing and things like that, that are additional warnings to those, to those who might be trying to cross as a pedestrian. But I just, you know, I don't know what the solution is. I haven't come to a conclusion about what I think we ought to do there. Kind of with Maggie in that regard, that it's, I think there's more that we need to look into. But that should also be a factor is that we just, we, I don't think it's, if we go without a pedestrian arm, physical arm, you know, I think that can be a consideration, that they will have all these other warnings going on around them at the time. That's kind of it, what I, what I've been wanting to say while I was trying to get a microphone to work. I don't know what it is. My, my, the system is not detecting a microphone on my computer, which has worked every time up until this time. So I don't know what's going on there. I'll have to look into it more. All right. Thank you.
All right. Good. All right. Anything, I think, oh, Russ?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, what I'm hearing from the suggestion, and, and I think the general consensus is that if we can have a physical barrier, is that if we can have a physical barrier for the pedestrians, that is an actuated barrier, so when the train comes along, that would be sufficient, is that correct?
I mean, whether that, whether that's a separate barrier or if the sidewalk is within the current barrier, I'm, I'm.
That's basically what I'm asking.
No, I'm not understanding what you're saying.
Yeah, I'm trying to picture what we do with Taylor down the street from me. I don't think there's a separate arm, there's not a separate arm for the sidewalk, the sidewalk is within the.
Right, that's what I'm saying, if we, if we can work with UP to have the sidewalk go inside of the arm, there's no need for a separate arm, that's what I'm trying to establish, basically.
Is that correct? Well, that's, yeah. I think the issue Wallace was talking about was that it's similar line of conversation that the sidewalks would be without, I mean.
Correct.
The exterior, you know, so people could actually go around.
Right, that's what I'm gathering, is if they're outside of the crossing arm, then they would, then the favorable standard and the best practice is to have their own crossing arm. But if they're inside the crossing arm, they don't need their own crossing arm, is that correct?
Yeah, I think Bill could weigh it in on this, but I thought that if we, if we widen our sidewalks to five feet, there's not enough clearance inside of that pole between the roadway and the, with, with the widened sidewalk. I could be wrong on that, that was the reason for, the motivation to go outside of the pole.
Okay, Bill, do you have anything on that?
The current design allows for a five-foot sidewalk inside of the gates, okay? But we're, we're adding space within there, so we could, we could narrow it down to four foot to make sure it does, but we thought putting in the new sidewalk through there, we should go to the five-foot standard. So right now, the plan is to put five-foot wide sidewalks inside of the gates. That's what the current plan.
If we, I mean, that sounds, that's acceptable.
That's awesome.
Yeah, yeah, that takes everything else off the table.
Right, yeah.
That sounds good.
So are we saying that we, we would go ahead and do this now and that possibly come back a little later time to talk about, do, when we have the funding to, to do the additional arms that would allow us then to open up the southbound Monroe to Guyer?
I think, I think that's basically it, is that, you know, it's not going to be part of this, but the council can come back and, and revisit it at a later date.
Yeah, and I, and I will say that the, the UP's concern with going inside of those gates was that if you're in a wheelchair, for example, you're, you're now trapped inside of the gate. If it comes, both gates come down, then you don't have access out, which was one of the other considerations for his recommendations on going outside of the existing arms. But you could do that with a breakaway gate, which is a swinging gate, so that you could, you know, if you were in there, either on foot or in a wheelchair, you could, you could clear that, that railway section. Is that right, Bill?
I'd, I'd have to further research that because we're looking at using the existing gates and, as they are right now.
No, but I meant, I meant the, the, the concern that the UP representative had that you, you might want to consider how you get someone who's trapped in there, who's, who's tried to get, attempted to get across, both arms come down, now they're in a wheelchair, there's no place for them to go.
Correct, as it is today.
Right. Well, today, that, you know, if you're, if you, if you were updating, you, you wouldn't want to look at today as, as, as a shining example, so I'm just.
Correct, and that's what.
In terms of, if, if we're, if we're truly looking to make it safe and, and reliable for, for pedestrians and bicycles and everybody else, what's the best alternative? And, and I, I guess, you know, for me, at this point, give me the best option, give me the worst option and let the council have a choice. Right now, you've, you've not given us options other than what I consider to be the worst.
So are you saying we shouldn't go forward, we need?
No, 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 Russ, Russ, no, 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 Russ, he's not saying that. I think, and Wallace, we've not seen any detail. I think that what the consensus of the, I think what Wallace is saying is, and that Wallace has seen, I guess, seen some stuff, is just that let's do all we can within this to make it as safe as possible, okay? And that, that, that's all, that's all he's saying when you talk to our engineers, let them know that, what are the options that, for making it as safe as possible? That, that's all, that's all I can ask for, I'm not, I'm not an engineer. So he's not saying, don't worry, I think we, I think I'm getting from the council, we move forward knowing that at some point we may come back to the, you know, the south, south of the tracks regarding the left turn in Monroe Place. But for now, move forward, but just when you, as you, you know, consult with the engineers, take into account the various things that, you know, council has said in, in regarding safety of all people going, going across the tracks. Yeah, Bob?
Yeah, I think he's also saying that if, if the safest resolution to this is $3 million, tell us what the option is and tell us it will cost $3 million and let the council decide then whether we want to invest in that option. And not to make a decision in a presentation based on, you know, well, we can't do this because it's too expensive or something like that. Just find the different options, base the, include the gold standard and, and then present it. That's, I think, Wallace, is that kind of what you were?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's it in a nutshell, Bob.
Maggie, raise your hand.
Yeah, also, I think what we were saying as well in speaking with Bill is that if we can do it within the, the arms of it now without going outside of the, of the standards, then we would like to look at that as well, as, as a number one possibility.
Yeah.
Are you, are you clear, Bill, on where we are with going forward?
Yes, I, I'm very clear and, and we can come up with the best options inside the arm and outside the arm. As far as cost estimates, we can do that on, with the engineers as far as our construction costs, but the cost from the railroad of what they're going to require extra, we don't know that, yeah.
We understand that right now, we understand.
Right, and I, that's one of the other things I was going, I meant to say earlier in my long speech, but that what the railroad will require us to do, I think that is still completely open to negotiations. If we want to build a sidewalk and they say, well, you have to also repl, then if you're going to come into our easement, you have to make all these expensive improvements, we can say, no, we're not going to do that, we're going to do the sidewalks. And they may, they may push back and, and force it, I don't know, but we may be able to negotiate that piece out of it.
Well, that is our intent from the beginning, is to negotiate the best position of the city with the railroad. What is unrealistic in our, in our interpretation so far is to ask the railroad to cost share.
Correct.
Yeah.
All right, so, with that, Russ, I mean, you have direction and going forward now?
Yep.
All right.
Thanks, everybody.
Anything else from, from council on this? All right, saying that, well, we have no further, we have no further business on the work session. We'll let Bob try to get his microphone, he worked out before meeting at seven o'clock. So anything else, Russ, Laurie?
No, that's all we've got, man.
Okay, all right, well then, this meeting's adjourned, we'll see everybody a little before seven o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you.